I think we have an exciting proposal tonight, an exciting option, something that is, will move us into ministry much more quickly than we expected. So with that, let me ask this question. Have you ever expected something to go one way? And then it didn't?
Never.
Yes? Yes, alright. I've got you on my side already. Things are looking good. So have you ever said that you would never do something? And then you did it? Yes? Yes? Mostly that comes with parenting, right? "I will never do that." And then you end up doing it yourself. You know, life is interesting that way, isn't it? You say, "Well, this is what we're gonna do." And then the plans change. "And I'm never gonna do this." And your plans change. Well, last August, I presented to you a vision that would position First Baptist New Braunfels not only for the population growth that we are experiencing in our city and are going to experience in our city, but would also position us for the coming decades, to be a place of ministry and a strategic location for the coming decades. You were faithful to pray. You were faithful to follow through. You were faithful to ask for God's clear direction for His church. And I'm very grateful for that. And I believe you're still continuing to pray regarding that. We believe, and we still do believe, that this direction involves a future relocation of our main campus. I'm still convinced of that. We need to relocate. Which, I have learned, is a massive undertaking. It's not like just, you know, moving a house or apartments or something. It's a massive undertaking to go through the entire process and the funds that are required. But not only have we learned through this process that it's a massive undertaking to physically move a campus, but it involves the examination of ministries. It involves the examination of the culture of the church. It involves all of those things being examined. And so, once we began to look into everything required, we just understood more completely that this is a huge, huge endeavor. I want you to know, we as a staff, we're working on those things. We're working on cultural changes. We're working on ministries, who we are, and how that impacts the future. Now, let me take us back a little bit. Last June, we voted to purchase a piece of property on Common Street. It's an expensive piece of land. It still is an expensive piece of land. And we debated that pretty thoroughly among us. We love the location. I did, I love that location. I think it's a great location. I love that piece of land. I can see so clearly that sweeping land and just a beautiful building being established there and decades of ministry taking place there. I love the size of it. And I just love so much about that property. Well, as you know, the sellers have not been tremendously cooperative. They've been somewhat silent in the process. And then they presented us with a pre-contract before we would negotiate price. And so, after all of that, along with the relocation committee and ministry staff, we just felt that it was best just to pull out of that and regroup and see what the Lord has for us. Because that's been a five-month process almost. We presented a contract to them on June the 10th. June the 10th. And so, it's a little unusual to present a contract to someone who's selling something, and you present a full-price offer, and you never hear from them. It's not normal. If you're trying to sell a house, don't do that. It's gonna delay the sale of the house. And so, that's just a little bit of where we have been. But as we have, as we've looked at in the first chapter of Joshua, we're reminded here that God's vision continues. I don't believe the vision has died. I believe the vision needs to continue. I think we look again and again in Scripture. We read of setbacks, don't we? We read of people having difficulty. And the Lord moving in their life in such a way, and we think it's gonna go this way, but the Lord changes that direction. I think of Joseph very clearly in this. And many of you are familiar with the story of Joseph. He took a very winding path to get to the fulfillment of his dream, didn't he? A very winding path. I do not believe, Joseph thought, that he would end up as a slave. I do not believe, he thought, that he would end up in prison. I do believe, he thought, his family would bow down to him. But I do not believe it came about in the way he thought they would bow down to him. He acted more as someone who was a Savior. Of course, not these Savior, but someone who stepped in and God used for His purpose. Joseph's journey and the reason for them bowing down certainly would not have been his route, would it? His would have been much different. His would have been much easier for him to reach that. But near the end of that storyline in Genesis, Joseph voices that all of what he experienced was all a part of God's plan. And he acknowledged the hand of God in taking him through all of those experiences that he had. And so, in our experience over the last year, I believe as a church, we have trusted the hand of God. We've trusted the Lord's leadership here. We've honestly sought God's will. We've honestly sought the leadership of the Father. And this journey has not been a selfish one. I am convinced, as a church, we do need to make a move. I believe that with all of my heart. A move needs to take place. And it's not a selfish move. It's a move that I simply believe the Lord is leading us to take. That part of God's vision has not changed. It has not changed. But tonight, I want to propose a move. But a little bit of a different kind of a move. A move that I hope and expect will all come back and culminate in what we originally expected. But I want to propose a more immediate move. This move falls within the vision of reaching people and affecting lives. And so, we're not stepping out of the umbrella of God's vision for this church. We're still working under that umbrella. But we are doing it with a much more immediate sense, with a much more immediate impact upon our community. A full campus move, even if we are as optimistic as we want to be, a full campus move is gonna take us five years. Five years. Even if one of you has land and oil is discovered on it, and you said, "Preacher, I'm just gonna give you $20 million. We can buy land, we can build a building." It's still gonna take a long time. It's still a long, long process. But what I want to propose to you tonight is a move that could happen in as little as 10 months. As little as 10 months. As a staff, over the last several weeks, we've been working, we've been praying, we've been talking, we've been discussing, we've been debating. And we are proposing that we begin a second service. Y'all are captivated by that, aren't you? Oh, there's more. Yes, there is more. We propose that we begin a second service at a pre-relocation location. Do we get that? That we begin a second service at a pre-relocation location. Now, what does that mean? It means that the population in New Braunfels is growing now. It's growing now. And it's gonna continue to grow. It means that with a smaller investment now, we can begin to invest in people now. We can begin to invest in outreach now by starting a second service in a different location. That's the pre-relocation location. So, what does that mean? Well, it means that we would start a second service somewhere else than this main campus. Does anybody get that now? Yes? Okay. It means that we could start a second service in the growth area. And we've looked further north. It means we could get there and establish our presence there and begin to reach and affect people there who would not come here. And so, we are getting out into the community. And we are beginning to minister and engage people in the community where they are. Now, you might ask, "Why wouldn't we do that here? Why wouldn't we just start a second service here?" Well, I will answer that with this. As a staff, we have spent considerable time over the last two years. So this isn't something we've just recently spoke about. We have debated this for at least two years of putting together a Sunday morning plan for two worship services. We never could settle on a plan. We never could settle on a plan that alleviates our biggest issue, and that's parking. We say, "Well, preacher, we could do something at 8:15." 8:15 services, according statistically, do not do well. They do not do well. We would love to have, if we did two services here, our goal would be to have the same music. That requires a lot of personnel. That requires probably double the people we have in choir now. There are issues that go along with that. But even if we were able to achieve all of that, we still run into our main issue. And that is parking. And so, we never felt peace about starting a second service here. Now, I know that sounds like the conventional wisdom thing to do. We just start a second service. But we keep running into the same issue. That same issue is parking. So the idea of a second service at a different location, however, really sparked an interest in us. It sparked this motivation. Instead of trying to get people here, we would go there. So we would be the missionaries in our own city. We would begin to go and reach them. We would be the ones who would invest in a growing area of town. And we would be there in order to reach them. Now, as a church, we voted to move further north. And I still love that direction. I still love the direction. There's massive growth out there. Our target still will be the I-35 corridor as it was before. Because that is the artery. That's what moves people between San Marcos and Church and Live Oak and all of those places. That's what moves them into New Braunfels. We could also be very strategic at the 306 corridor. Because there's a great many people who live out that area. A number of our own folks live out in that area. And I'm sure those folks who live out there can't believe the massive growth that has taken place. You know, when we moved here, the closest grocery store was on Walnut. Right? Y'all probably went to the grocery store and bought for a whole month, so you didn't have to go back. So when we think about the growth just in that one area, it has exploded over the last 10 years. But as people continue to move in that direction, and there are neighborhoods that are continuing to go up near the airport, there's neighborhoods that are going up just past, on 306, just past Green Road and Hunter Road. So there's an enormous amount of growth that is taking place. As we do that, in as little as 10 months, we could be investing in those people now and engaging them with a gospel now. So let's look at some numbers, and we'll open it up for some questions. Let's look at some numbers here. We still have the giving commitment date of November the 24th. We're still gonna go through that. We need to go through that. We need to make that commitment. We need to make that long-term commitment to a full relocation. That's what we need to do. Following through with this financial commitment, it builds a financial foundation to put us in a better position when that piece of property comes up, that we believe the Lord is leading us to purchase. In the more immediate future, we believe we can do two very important things that are beneficial to us as a church. First, we have a balance of roughly $380,000 left on this facility, on the Arnold Ministry Center. The recent sale of our property netted us over $300,000, right? And so, we believe that if we take those funds and our immediate commitments that come in, we can combine those funds and we can pay off this facility. We can retire this debt. That is a huge thing. And so, as we think about that, we can think that in under five years, we can burn the note on this building. We can be done with it. We can celebrate that. And that just builds more equity for us in the future and the future sale of this property. But we want to continue to push. We want to continue to push for an additional $1 million in order to fund the second service. You think, "Wow, preacher, that's quite a second service." Well, when we think about the fact that that $1 million, we're looking at a three-year budget. We're looking at a three-year budget rather than just a one-year budget. We believe that amount will secure those three years, the first year being the most expensive. Because we have to buy stuff. We have to buy equipment. We have to rent a place. And hopefully, by those two, three years, the service will have grown and new givers will be contributing to that budget. And again, we're working off the same budget for the entire this campus and the pre-relocation location. So what we would have to do, we would have to treat that second service very much like a new church plant. That would be our mindset. We would be thinking about planting a church. But we're not planting a church that is separate from us. We're just planning an opportunity to reach people in a growing area of town. So what we would do is this. We would ask for 100 people to make a commitment, to be missionaries that we would send out of this body. That they would commit. We would go through training. We would learn what it takes to plan a church. And there would be that commitment to go and to do what is needed in order to firmly establish a work in a new area of town. We would also need to add some staff. That would be significant. A campus director in that location, keeping up with what is taking place in the new location. And so, that's why we are looking for a big number. I know a million dollars is a big number. But we want to make sure that there is a good, solid financial foundation as we go and as we commit to a new work. Our long-term goal is to relocate. Long-term goal is to be one church. In the meantime, though, we can engage now. We can engage new, growing areas now. Instead of saying, "Well, we don't know when it's gonna happen. We're hoping to buy some property. And once we get the property paid off, we'll go and build a new facility." That could take literally, as a minimum, five years. And in five years, we've wasted and lost a lot of time. We believe that with sending out a group who says, "You know what? We'll go. We'll be a part. We'll go engage ministry. We'll go and reach new people." And having the support and the commitment of this campus, because we still need this campus. We still need to do Wednesday night ministries on this campus. We still need to support our First Baptist Kids Academy, which is over 200 kids this year and should be over 400 next year, right, Leslie? Now, this is, yes, there we go. So we still have great opportunities and usefulness here at this location. But there's areas of our city that are growing and areas that are growing now. And so that we could invest in those areas now and allowing the Lord to use us in that process. But this campus is significant. It's significant. Because it gives us that security. It gives us that commitment to say, "We are with you. We love you. We are for you. We are in this together as a church body." Allowing the Lord to use us, taking great risks for the gospel, and allowing the Lord to bless His church. Now, a realistic timeline, as we've learned, is not Easter. Kind of thought it might be. But a realistic timeline is not Easter. A more realistic timeline would have us beginning to do worship services in late summer, somewhere around beginning, the middle of August, with a full push to be running, up and running by September. There are locations, we don't know the location. We don't know where that's gonna take place. So a great deal of research has to be done. And a great deal of communication is going to have to be done with the church. So we need the commitment of the church, though. We need your support. We need your commitment and willingness to take a risk for the gospel, to reach people now. Instead of just saying, "We'll do it in the future" when the opportunity is now. Who's with me? Okay, so here's the fun part. You get one question, and it can be four words. Like a haiku. Alright. Duke Dodson is going to... I saw Robert Fur raise his hand.
Instead of investing a million dollars and moving to a school camp or somewhere, why don't we have a small group and church service here at night? Like another morning service at night?
Okay, we can still think about options and opportunities. Yes?
And mine was, "Why don't we have a Saturday night service there rather than just any night? A Saturday night service is a very attended service quite often."
I do understand, and a lot of places might do that. I'm selfishly reluctant to do that. And the reason being is, what I have discovered in talking with other people about that is, the staff, the staff has no weekend at all. It severely limits staff time off. Because if you have a Saturday night service, say if it's 6 o'clock, staff has to be here by 4:30. Musicians have to be here earlier than that. That would be my initial response to that. But options are still open.
There'd be additional staff needed.
No, we fully understand that, yes. Yeah, we fully understand that. Oh, I forgot to mention that. What direction are you answering that question from? No, I understand. I understand. I feel I would need to be in both places. So what that means is, a new church, a pre-relocation location would not involve Sunday School. We would look to do small groups through that location, okay? What that means is, we can start over there 9:30, 9:45. That means I can preach there and then be back here in time to preach as well. Okay. Yeah, hold on. Go ahead.
Oh, it's me. This, I don't know how to word it. It may be a logistical question. But I've been here since 1993. And I was not here when we set up a mission at Oakwood. Okay? We lost control of Oakwood, I believe. Now, that's my feeling because of what happened to Roy and myself when we went there and left because of that reason. How could we set it up, please, so that doesn't happen again? I don't know, I don't wanna go into depth or any of that. I don't really want to do that. But I just think that we need to think about that at this time.
Sure. And those questions have been brought up in our staff gathering?
Have they?
Yes.
Can you share with us some of the feelings?
Well, we would establish our core values.
Right. I think the key word that you said earlier was firmly, that we could firmly set another church in place.
Yes, yes. And so, we would still be, it would still be this church.
Yes, I understand all that.
And so, it wouldn't be a church plant where we say...
I understand that too. But just have some more guidelines, I guess.
Okay, I'm not sure how I can answer you then.
I don't, that's what I said. It's a logistical thing. Thank you, though.
Yes, ma'am. Thank... Hold, over here. Ms. Genevieve has a question.
As someone who lives in the north area, I have envisioned a church out there ever since we moved. And the thing of starting something right away is, there are housing areas that are still popping up everywhere. And those people, when they move in, need to know that there is a group of Baptists right close that they can be a part of. And so, I see your vision and share with you that we need to reach those people who are moving here now.
Thank you. Good. Tom?
Is there a reason we don't want to start a mission? Start a new church plant? I mean, I'm here in second service. And to me, I mean, it used to be called a mission. Now it's called a church plant or a satellite church. Is there some reason we don't want to, you know, encourage a separate Baptist church in that area?
Jared, I think Jared has a great answer for this question. You guys correct me. I think one in nine church plants fail. So, say again. One in nine church plants succeed. Excuse me, yes. Yes, one in nine succeed. Yeah, that's a big difference, yes. So, the rate of success for a church, establishing a new work in a different location, is much higher. Because there's that support of the foundational church in that process. There's committed people that come out of that. There's the financial backing in order to keep that going. A typical church plant usually gets funding for three years. And then it cuts off. That's why so many new church starts die after year three or four. That's why so many new church starts die after year three or four, because their funding is cut. Yeah, it's a nice sized church, yes, it is. It can be, it can be, but we feel like we want to engage an area as this church, and engage an area, and then ultimately, come back together as one body. I've been to Potiphar's house, but I haven't been to jail yet. So, we might, we might get there, but on this, at this juncture in the journey... No. It's always been to relocate as one body. That's been what I believe we needed to do. Well, this is... Yeah. Yeah, this seems like our best option to begin to impact people as quickly as possible. We do have some information packets prepared for you, like we did last summer, that Jared has worked on to put together, that will answer probably some of the questions, you know, that you have. So, if you have any questions following that, please call him. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I understand what you want to do, but let's just get some stuff out, so everybody understands where we're going. I understand that we're not going to build a building, we're going to find a place to rent.
Correct.
Okay, and so, then, we will continue to look for the place that we're actually going to build on later down the road. Okay, I'm not sure everybody got that. So, we're not going to actually go and purchase a piece of land and build a building.
No, no, that whole process hasn't been abandoned, but the more immediate would be to rent a facility.
Yeah, which is a much more cost-effective way to do business. So, good idea.
Asking 100 people to go to a new location, how would that affect children in youth ministries and people volunteering to also staff those, if you're possibly taking people who currently work in that?
Well, yes, I mean, that is an issue we're going to have to deal with, depending on who those people are that go. And so, we wouldn't say, we want everyone under 45 to go, you know? I still think we need to look like we look, we need to look like a church family, so, you know, I fully expect that we'll have, you know, senior adults, empty nesters, and yes, there will be families with young children. But that means, some of those families with young children will be staying here as well, and we will have to retool here, and we will have to challenge folks to get busy, and some folks to, you know, teach children Sunday School, or, you know, volunteer for extended care and all those other things.
Yeah, Brad, I had a question, I didn't quite understand. You said that at the new location, there would be, there would be no Sunday School, but there would be small groups? Would there be Sunday School or small groups after the service, or how do you envision?
Well, we'd really look, we'd really try to focus on developing those small groups at a different time, because the hours, you know, are limited. We did a quick search for renting a school, and so, renting a school is $175 for three hours, and we really feel that we could use some time effectively in the coming together, growing in fellowship, the worship time. We would have classes for children, we would need to do a children's ministry in the morning, but we would look to set up our adults and families to meet on different nights, they could meet right after, they could meet on a Sunday night, they could meet a different time of the week, to develop those times. We are seeing, some of our groups have started to do that here, and we're hearing very good things out of that, because there's an extended period in which folks can be together, an extended period where they can talk about Scripture, where they can talk about life, and they can spend a little more time in fellowship, rather than having to squeeze that down into that, you know, 45-minute timeframe.
It sounds like your thoughts are to move the campus more towards the I-35 corridor...
Yes, that's what we've talked about.
...to make it more available to folks up in San Marcos, as well as the local area. Have there been any locations that you previously identified that might be available since this one has fallen through?
There are, yes, there are other locations, they're just all very expensive. They're just all, and plus, they would all fall into that same timeframe of five-year minimum. So, we really see like, this is an opportunity to engage in the much more immediate.
Comment relative to two sites, one of the things that I've been impressed with is the commitment to do both with excellence, and the conversation, the comment about people moving. May not be figured out yet, but I appreciate the fact that that's the way you guys are looking at it.
Sure, yeah, this campus is still very important to us, and so, we're not looking to, you know, to put all energies into one place and not in the other place. That's why we would need to hire additional staff to focus on that new work, so that we can continue doing the work here. Now, that, obviously, that means some things are going to be jumbled, and there's going to be some new faces, and different people are going to have to step up and do some things. But, we trust God to provide those things that we need, and those individuals that All the way back up here, Duke, I'm sorry.
So, this is a fairly expensive proposition, a million dollars for a three-year. How long do you think that forestalls the ultimate ability to purchase property, then? Does that put that way off into the seven-to-10-year timeframe?
I really don't know. I think it just depends on where we are, what kind of potential growth we would see in the new work, and what kind of, you know, war chests we're building from commitments.
And then, are you thinking, after this, you know, say, a piece of property comes available a couple of years from now, or whatever, and you go ahead and we go ahead and put down a stake in that, you're thinking that the two communities, even though they were separated, you would want to bring them back together, ultimately, in a new facility?
That's still, yeah, that's still my ultimate vision.
A vision.
Yes. Angela?
I want to follow back up with her question, in support of Pastor Brad. So, Pastor Brad gave a really accurate number at the beginning of the session, and that was $20 million, because we were looking at a piece of land that was $6 million, and then, plus, you have to build a land, you have to build a building, and that comes in multiple phases. And design is a year, year and a half, and then building the building is another year, year and a half, and there's always change orders, so it's always more than you expect. So, that said, what we're doing here is we're doing $300,000 a year, okay, about, from a million-dollar investment, to add to our stake, to add investors into what we're doing, to add investors in what God's business is. And so, that $20 million, we can't build a building without that $20 million. We can buy land for five or six, but then we still have to build, and we still have to pay a design team, and we still have to wait and see what happens, and we still have to get investors, and we have to have givers who are interested in that building. If we don't see action that we are serious about what we're doing, it's going to be hard for people to want to invest. So, at least having a satellite location, a secondary location, so that we can combine the two in the future, it's, hey, we're building our church membership, we're building our family. There's going to be families of four who don't want to turn around and drive all the way downtown to Grand Falls if they live off 306, or if they live off of 46 East. And so, this kind of takes excuses out of it, and it gives them a smaller way to get involved, when some might be overwhelmed with seeing this church family of 600 on a Sunday morning, and they feel like they're part of something. And when we combine, because we have a little bit of old and a little bit of new, it's going to make things a lot easier. So, and there is a way that this could expedite the process of building that church building, and being able to add our funds, and add opportunities for land as well, over the course of it, while still doing God's work.
Just to piggyback on what Angela said, it was always my hope that as soon as we purchased property, we would start doing something on that property. That's a model that I've seen, that when I saw that model, my thought was, that's crazy. Why would they do that? But it worked very well. And so, I don't know if I ever voiced that publicly, but certainly in our meetings, didn't want the land to just sit there fallow, wanted to use it. And so, again, to me, this falls very much in line with that original intent, the original vision. We just don't have land, but we're going anyway, we're doing it anyway. Yes, ma'am, Karen? Come on, Duke.
Well, you're talking about a million dollars over three years, but if we're out there, people are going to be coming to us, and more people will be sharing that burden, and it's not just the group we have now.
Exactly, exactly, that's the hope and the expectation.
It will be spread out with the new people.
There will be, there will be new givers added, both there and here, and so, that burden will be...
So, maybe we shouldn't be quite so daunted by that number, because there's going to be more people.
I agree with you. Well, there you go. You're exhausted? Ma'am? Yes, we know. Yes. Oh, good, you're a resource, then. Look at that, some of our first volunteers to go. I love it. We do have a great God. My wife is saying she wants to call me later. Yeah, I'm not getting that. You know husbands, when you can't read your wife's face? It's one of those. Let me tell you what you can do now. There was, was that the whole text? Okay, okay. So, we will pass out these fact sheets to you. We ask you to begin to pray. We're going to come back on November 17th and have a little more discussion. Hopefully, we'll be at the point of voting to begin to make a push forward here. So, lots of information here. If you have the need for more information, please call us. We'll do our very best to answer questions, because all questions haven't been answered at this point, because we don't know all the questions to ask. But we are, we're working diligently on that. And so, James and Nellie have just become two primary resources for us. Sir Gary and Sally Williams, they've been through this process before, and have seen it work very, very well. So, all right, is that it? We can do that next week as well. We can do that next week. I'll go ahead and announce we're having a call business meeting on November 17th, and if there's nothing to vote on, then we have nothing to vote on.